Yeah. Oh, okay. You want to go back to committee reports?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Jack. Okay.
Okay.
Marver.
All right. At our last meeting, we talked about the launching of the launch rates, et cetera. And people using the launch rate were interpreting the launching payment rules in various ways to suit their own purpose. They're launching more than one vessel with two kayaks for the $10 fee. Others are using the same launch tag for more than one day. And also had some discussion amongst the Harbor Commission members regarding different fees for motorized and non-motorized vessels. At our last meeting, the Harbor Commission recommended a single launch fee of $10 or $10 for all vessels regardless. And then the discussion with staff at that meeting recommended the wording on the launch fee signage be changed to be daily launch fee $10 per vessel. So the Harbor Commission is recommending that the city council approve the $10 launch fee for all vessels. And the signage changes to two two kayak signs available. I'd be glad to answer any questions anybody has on that.
Is it current in $5 for that?
$5 for motorized this.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Jack, thank you for doing that. I think it's a great idea to increase that launch fee. To launch, that I would like to launch the fee even higher. I don't see why we shouldn't have a $15 launch fee with a discount to $10 for an annual permit, say. As I look at that fee, I can, and you look at the vessels that launch in our harbor. It's not unusual. I mean, certainly there are kayaks that launch, there are boats of all sizes and shapes and prices that launch. But this harbor tends to draw boats that probably cost in the area of the six packs $75,000 to $100,000. You have commercial activities going on. What these people need to understand is that we don't have a, we don't have a tax to support this port. It all has to come from user fees. And therefore, this, the launch fee at $15 to me would seem to be absolutely appropriate. And if these boat owners understood that the use and the abuse that goes on in this harbor, that we have to pay for that, I think they'd get it. I mean, right there as you come into the entrance, you see where at the, at the, at the fire deal where the safety pole has been knocked down. We have part of those banks of concrete abutments on the west side or on the east side of the harbor that have been destroyed by people just backing into them. So this is an, just in those little things, it's an expensive thing to maintain. Lots being ripped off by sea harbor port, the harbor restroom facilities, just on and on and on. And, and to, I just ask you, is $15 too much? Why not 15?
Are you asking me as a member of the Harbor Commission or?
Yeah, just your method.
It may not be too much, but remember, we just, we just raised the fee this year to $10. And I think that if we keep it at 10 for the rest of the year, actually in July, we don't have the figures, but we collected, the city collected over $4,000 on, out of the kayaks, which is, I think considerably more than we had been doing in the past. So the fee cut, the kayaks has done well. We get all these other people with Scott laws to pay up. We do fine. And I can, I can only give you my opinion. I can't give you a Harbor Commission opinion, but I can give you a Harbor Commissioner opinion and my personal opinion. I don't think that 15 is unreasonable, but I think that given the fact that we just raised it this year to 10, that we ought to wait at least a season to do it. You asked my opinion.
Thank you, Jack. I appreciate it. Thank you for allowing me to get still passionate about this.
Anyhow, that is our recommendation that the city council approve that $10 launch fee for all vessels. And change the signage to be daily launch fee $10 per vessel. And I'm sure, you know, maybe frontost steps may, may need to be taken because it seems to be people who are just looking for loopholes and ways around things today. I don't know. I'll get on my soapbox. Just a minute. I'm gonna get along there. I don't know why people can't be responsible for what they must. Okay, that's it. Any questions?
So Jack, this has to go on an agenda item for us for discussion, open discussions?
That's all, yeah. It's not a problem.
On the agenda for the 19th?
Yeah.
For discussions of harbor recommendations?
Do you have a word?
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a question? Thank you.
Thank you, Jack, and have a safe trip.
Thank you. You're welcome.
He's getting out of Dodge.
It was a vacation.
Can I do public comments now?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we have a letter from Council from a Steve Seville. And everybody said a copy. Let me read that and then put it onto. This one. Is there any other public comment? Here again, yeah, unfinished business.
Do you have a question about this? Do you want to ask a question?
Sure.
Did Mr. Seville and any of the other property owners get the typical 500-foot notice that this was wanting to be upgraded? Two more minutes for that? No. Well.
Originally two years, two years ago when it first went before a council.
Yes, but the quickest way to answer is there was a, four years ago, there was a conditional use permit, so you're right. There was public sharing and notice was brought about about two years. The, and on next week's agenda, there was a request made before to renew the expired fee from the contract from next week. And residence was 250,000. I've been mailing notices regarding that. I saw one with the saddle over the deck. They renewed conditional use permit? So this was constructed without conditional use permit? Is that what you're saying? Expired permit? Expired. Okay. So we built this on expired permit. Okay.
We do not agree. We do not into it.
It expired during.
Okay, moving on. We need to discuss results from the executive session. And at this time, I'd like to propose our motion for pay raises for our city recorder and public works officers according to our budgeted amount of 5% each.
I'm sorry. A 5%?
Yes, it's in the budget, a 5% merit increase. It's been moved in second to follow the budgeted amounts for aftervaluations for our city recorder and public works director to raise their salaries by 5%. So any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I'm sorry, I didn't vote. I, aye.
Okay. Motion is passed. Okay. Thank you. She made, I think you're a new business city park event.
And she's two pieces to it. So she has the part with the fee waiver, but then she also filled out to use. She came in and met with city staff to use the cooking tables, but also the rental fees for using the tables and chairs at the community hall. That was sent in second.
We don't rent out those chairs, do we?
Yes.
Are new ones?
No, it's the ones in the bus bar, the metal ones.
Oh, the old ones. Okay. Yeah, not our new ones.
We did rent out chairs. I have no, that practice has been to use.
They're not together anymore.
I don't have practice to use what, what sets.
Yeah, just because we, yeah, we used to use the chairs because those were in the, in the, we, but now we have new ones there and it's kind of limited. We've got plenty of the older chairs.
Yeah.
And what we did, we picked through and get the better ones if we rent them out because there's some really low quality ones in there.
Well, my name is Shulay and thank you for letting me talk to you. I did meet with Brady and Paul and Carla to talk about these being waived for the use of 10 tables and then, well, I had listed on the sheet when I turned it in, 25 chairs. But then people I was working with thought a more even amount would be better if we could change that to just 30 chairs. And then we talked to Brady and Paul about 500 tables. And the, I'm supposed to contact Brady on Friday at about 3 o'clock to go over the park and make sure that the keys work effectively for water and electricity at the gazebo. We also did talk about that we are a retirement community and I was hoping that just a little bit of city parking that, where the city can pass or, yeah, could be used for people coming to the picnic. And Paul and Brady had talked about being able to, where the red mark is, putting ones out and saying, is it's a community-wide event? It's been advertised from like Safeway of Lincoln City or to like Newport JC Market and all through town.
So just to clarify, you're asking for the council to waive the fee of use of the city park, correct? And for the rental of the tables and chairs?
Oh, yes. And it would, these items wouldn't be moved by any city personnel. They would be moved by, I've had to coordinate people to move the tables and chairs. And so the chairs would be picked up here and moved down to the park. The tables are located at the community hall and so they would be taken down to the park. Oh, and we were wanting to maybe lengthen the hours because of how we move the tables. We'd like to start moving the tables at 8:00 AM on the date of picnic, which is such a nice. And then be able to put everything away by dusk of that evening.
I'm sorry, what's the purpose of this event? What is it all about?
It's about what's the main meeting rate. Because, well, there's been a lot of changes since I've been back because I've moved away almost 20 years. And a lot of people, we don't know each other anymore. As a medical social worker, I believe in the importance of community socialization as it can increase our lifespan. And it would be nice to get together and eat with people and play games. There's going to be cornball and badminton and croquet, but there'll be also table games. There's a puzzle. If people don't want to play those kinds of games, there's also card games. I encourage people to bring their own games. It would just be fun to get together. And then later in the afternoon, there will be a time to have a roundtable discussion just to talk about our community events.
That all sounds great, but the fact that you're calling yourself Concerned Citizens of Depot Bay Wood, that's kind of off-putting. I'm not understanding what that's about.
Okay. Well, because there was a sign that was being put up, I just wanted people to be able to ask questions. So I did create Concerned Citizens of Depot Bay Gmail dot com so I didn't have to use my personal email. That was the only reason for that. And because when I do send out emails, I am saying, oh, hi, all concerned citizens. Because I have a list of like 42 people that I've been sending emails to and collaborating with some of them. The emails, some of them end up texting me, some of them private message me through direct message on Facebook.
Question for Kim. What do we charge for gazebo rental and the middle of the, what are we talking about here?
I don't have yet.
Community hall.
Eighty-six twenty-five. Thank you. I don't have it memorized, but I know that they have the application. And then the tables and chairs are.
Are we having a discussion now?
Yeah.
Okay. I, if I could, you know, genetically, I am just disposed for everybody in town.
I would like to get everybody who comes to Depot Bay to have a little skin again. And because, you know, again, we don't have any property taxes here that we're getting. We're not, I can't say we're not flush with money anymore. Apparently, that's not the case. But since, you know, since we give our community hall away to this, you know, the garden club and the coast guard a dozen other entities at least, I don't see how we could charge you for trying to do something that's to the good of Depot Bay. I just wish we didn't have to give this all away all the time. But I'd be in favor of whatever the council's desire is. Thank you.
I do have some concerns with the poster. I mean, it says, "From Fortified, there will be a roundtable discussion for concerned citizens regarding our traditional community events." That sounds like quite the specific agenda. And I'm not sure if that's something that as a city council, we should be, you know, absorbing the cost of. I do have a bit of issue with that.
Well, one of the things, our signs for the fleeted flowers, like the words fleeted flowers are cracked and broken. It would be nice to be able to collaborate with people to find out who might be available to help to fix those signs before we use them next way flowers and things like that.
To me, it just kind of feels like you're trying to do things separate from the city. Like you're kind of branching off. We've got some angry people on your side that are coming, just from the things I've seen on Facebook about it. It looks pretty controversial.
Oh.
So is, that's my only concern, us getting involved with waiving the fees or something and not.
I like fixing things that, for the fleet of flowers, I mean, the fleet of flowers gets donations from us every year. So if they need, yeah, that's a separate organization.
Oh, yeah.
By what Autumn said on your, on your posters that we're organizing the 2024 salmon bake. And we just turned up the last meeting from the chamber that they are doing salmon bake. So.
Yep, we did hear that. And so, yep, we did. But that doesn't mean there aren't people who would like to be able to get together and organize a group where we know that we can volunteer for our community and make events for our community. And we're just in the process of trying to get to know each other and, and build that. The reason I brought up the signs for the bridge is because Captain Wyatt has asked me to like do the main big brief with greens. And I noticed when I was taking everything apart that the words are broken. And so that was one of the things I collaborated with her about is talking to people about getting a list of, of people who would have time to fix that sign before we need it again. We don't really have an agenda. We're just getting together to, to meet each other, to group, to like collaborate about things that are important to us. Yeah. We don't know each other yet. It's hard to say there was an agenda when there isn't really an agenda, but to get together and, and collaborate and, and figure out what we want to do. A lot of the people that are coming, that are on the list that I've been collaborating with on the emails don't want to be, they don't want to volunteer for the chamber. And so I don't know what that'll look like because the chamber, I guess, gets to run the salmon bake. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be able to get together as people to talk about our town and how meaningful these things have been for us.
I don't think anyone's saying that you guys can't get together, but, you know, there is to get together, but.
You may find this shocking, but I agree with what Council Beasley said. We give too much stuff away. We really do. And I was, I was glad to see that the other ones aren't on the list anymore. So. I think it's really, I asked staff too about a history of how many times, how often do we give the haul away and park away. Even the courage people pay for their thing, I mean, everybody pays for it. Chamber really is the only one that I've noticed over the years that was given, but they are a legitimate nonprofit too. So.
I think, I think there's merit in increasing the rates and charging everybody for the use of our facility. I think that this should probably be determined in the year, we're starting at like January the first. And move forwards. They won't have, you know, grandfathered the people for this year, but rates to rates, maybe first of the year. Maybe $1. Make sure people pay.
We already have rates, separate rates.
Yeah.
I'm very yourself.
And that would be quite a good question. It surprises. Were you okay?
I just have one more question. Is this only for people of your organization or part of your group to come?
No, this is a city-wide, it's been promoted outside of our citywide event. So anybody's invited to come and break bread or bring whatever food that they want. I know that my family wants to bring salmon. And so we have our food handlers cards and we're, that's what we're, because that's what we're used to getting to share with people here in our community. At this time of year, saying thank you to the ocean for all of the bounty that we have been blessed with throughout the year.
Any other questions? All ready. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to, to absorb the fees for this group and to allow them to meet down there.
Is there a second?
One second.
It's been moved in second to waive all the fees for this event on September 9th down at the park. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
I believe it's carried. Council Ben, who will say aye?
Could we have a voice count?
Okay, because I wasn't sure I got everybody. Okay, Council Beasley?
Aye.
Council Bennenfield?
Aye.
Council Watson?
No.
Council King?
Yes.
Mayor Short?
Yes.
And Council Shaw?
No.
Motion must carry. Okay. We've got a county-wide proposal to, from Katie Jacobson. I think everybody's had a chance to review this. What's going on is, you know, is taking the wire right to our attention. There's a movement to provide shelter for the homeless population in both Lincoln County or Lincoln City and Newport. And the county has found funds available through a RAPA. And they are asking our support as well as the other cities listed on this letter to help fund this operation. So I'll open the discussion on this. I, I personally am in favor of $6,817. I found that's in the budget, that we do have funds available. We do. And it seems nominal at this time to support this effort to, and we would be able to avail folks if we find them as well, homeless in our community. And. So any end discussion on this?
I'm, I'm just happy that these two cities have stepped up to do it.
It's a county?
That's, yeah.
Is the county? I know this about the funds.
I know.
Right, but the, with donations, yes.
Yeah. So I'm curious about the other communities that we've heard, if they're willing or not. And let's say two communities say no, does that change how much we would be contributing or?
I don't, I don't know about that. But I, I know from attending the homeless committee advisory that every city in Lincoln County will be participating. They are very, very adamant of banding together to assist citizens in this county, to provide some kind of care.
Mayor, please forgive me. I, I did not see that presentation. I lost it because I filed a paper.
Oh, okay. It's a letter from Katie Jacobson from County Commissioner, Lincoln County. It, it just says they're putting sheltering during the winter months. And they're asking each city in the city and the county at 450, 495 per person that's in the city limits. And so our portion would be $6,817.
That's why I was asking Peggy tonight about the, kind of the mechanics of this. You know, how would this work? How would we identify, approach people and send them?
They have a system where they know where people are at now, are locating. And so they go out and they actually will bring them in to the shelters.
So you want to come out here and pick them up?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's search and rescue type of thing.
And what, and do, and that's an interest, that's kind of funny. But can we impel people to take?
You cannot. You cannot. You cannot force anyone against their will. But with a free meal and warm bedding and.
Pre-ride.
Yeah, pre-ride. I think people would be willing to get out of the winter elements and seek shelter.
Well, you know.
And there's many guidelines that will be set up to regulate what's, what's going on in these shelters. And so I think it, it would be a great, a great thing. Yes, you think?
I'm in favor, but I also just wanted to say that I really think that this is the method we need to use to talk about homeless. This, we need to be coordinating and the county needs to be at the helm of that. So I'm really, I'm really glad that this, there is a chance for us to try it out and try out the partnership. And I really think that's on term. We're going to have to do this type of work better.
Absolutely.
Okay, the, the only, the missing thing for me in this, Mayor, I'm, I'm absolutely in on this. But the missing thing for me is we come in here and we spend money. And we, the only, the only assuredness that I have that we won't have that nonsufficient funds check bounce at the bank is your word that we have all of this money in the bank or here.
I think if you actually, Kim Scott for you this evening. I think if you actually, Kim Scott for you this evening, breaks statements to show because we can't produce anything from...
These are as of the end of August.
Then my other question would be, where in the budget would you cover $6,000?
There is a budget item that everybody knew that I slipped in there just in case the city council had something they wanted to do, but I put a budget line on there for $10,000. That's separately called city council. So, the city council can choose to do the better money they want, but it's that money. General fund. Yeah.
General fund. Thank you, Phil. So, we are covered. And you'll see that we are.
One thing I didn't tell you, they're kind of in order. Before you sort through them, I should probably tell you what the order is. The first one at the top, the two-page one is the general fund. That's our general checking account. Then, one that follows it is the, oh, I'm gonna have to place that one. That's the, oh, now that my mind just had them all. One's on money, just a plain money market. And I can, I'll send this all to you guys in email because it's, I've had to wrap my head around this. So, there's, there's a money market runs a bond account, one's where all of the utility fees go into. That's the big $6 million one that's for all the water and utility fees. It's called the water fund. I don't know why, but that's just what they call it. One of the smaller ones is the, just the money market where they do the bond. And then the smallest one is the urban renewal. That is only small because finance donates to do the transfers and then it'll be showing what was reflected in the budget. So, I'm gonna have to review those soon. The two at the back, the LGIP, are also savings accounts, and that's where the senior plans funding is. It's also, the other one is where we put our shared revenues and as far as grants are sitting, our grant money is sitting. So, that's what those are for. And if you want, I can go ahead and write this. I think we have this somewhere and I can, I can get it out.
It's like a spreadsheet.
Yeah, there's the, yeah. And then, you know, they kind of wrote down like when they do cash receipts where things come out of and what goes into what. I am gonna meet with Unfall because mostly they've got some rate rates that would compete with LGIP, which I can't see how they can do. I originally wanted to do the borrower money to LGIP. So, I'm gonna do this. We get over 10% interest from LGIP. So, I'm not sure how LGIP would do that.
Thank you, Kim. So, I'm gonna make the motion to participate in this proposal, countywide proposal for winter shelter, and make a contribution of $6,817 to support our commissioners in their effort to house people during the winter months.
Second.
It moved and seconded to expend $6,817?
A maximum of $6,000 in case the other cities don't do it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. I'll change that to a maximum of $6,817. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, councilors. Okay, so everyone suggests we read Kim's countywide proposal for the, oh, no, that's what, municipal liability protection to the legislatures.
And this is really to help Brady out because if he is supposed to start, it is to help the municipal, like the municipal, because if he's supposed to start dealing with PFAS, some things automatically have it, and there are no alternative sources. So, he doesn't really have a choice anymore than my fire has a choice in some of the things that they use. Like the phone, that has PFAS. And so, this is the Lee Morgan City is just asking for support with the legislature. And I'm just asking you, and I'm, once again, on Brady's behalf, the public works, to see if you would be willing to support, saying yes, the city thinks we should have an exception on these particular municipal infrastructure. That's all it is. It's not exceptional or anything else, just for us. And it would be a matter, the way it's crafted would be a matter of, if there are alternatives, we would, we'd be expected to use them, but most things, infrastructure, city water and service is just too specialized, and fire, just those things are just too special.
Is there a motion to draft a letter of support?
I think I attached a draft.
Oh, okay.
It's the motion to approve your...
I'll make a motion that we support this letter of support.
Sounds good. Let's support that. We need a second. It's been moved and seconded to draft a letter of support to the PFAS. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, we'll get that out. When does they need this? This probably is...
Stunarizing, yeah. They originally had a national hearing day, but that was kind of stung July.
Oh, thank you. Okay. You want to talk about a potential work session?
So, we received our salary survey, the study report back. The report came in, and I met with, we probably met with the survey team from PSU to see, you know, make sure we understood what we were looking at. And if you would like to have them attend the work session, they would be willing to do it. So, you could ask them questions. It was not, for me, it was not a surprise in most areas, a few areas were, but part of the problem that we have is that they were going based off of our job descriptions and classifications, and they are outdated. The other ones that are not are the ones that were recently redone, which is the office, they count the specialists in the office, but all of them are out of date. So, I wanted to kind of talk to you guys about that, come up with a potential, some potential drafts. I've been working on it for some time now, working with Brady and the guys I had asked, we started with the harbor ticket and say, what do you do? It's hard to match Roy's job because he's the harbor master, but he's also a maintenance worker. So, our job descriptions, they just needed to be made in line. So, they matched them as best as they could. But I, the idea is to show you what they have. I also have some of the job descriptions from the cities that we spoke with. So, it's really a work session for me to share this information and talk about a potential path for it.
When do you suggest we do them? Well, we've got the town hall, so maybe sometime early October. First, um, first we need October.
We can do it any day as long as it works with you.
Like the hour before council meeting?
Would it like council meeting? Now you're for four hours. So, first council meeting is on October 3rd, and we have on October 17th.
Is an hour out of time?
I would think so.
So, October 17th?
Is that what you want?
Or 3rd?
What do you want? October 3rd?
Five o'clock?
October 3rd?
October 3rd.
Okay. All righty. Okay, city staff reports. I guess you're up again, Kit.
Re-engage my brain here. They get a couple of items this evening that come to report out to the council on their basically complaint related to this kind of process. The first was related to Larissa Plaza. But there was an email, complaint petitioned for due by email from Counselor Rep back the end of July, and she's quite concerned about the offsite parking lot for Larissa Plaza, which is a town avenue that comes out of it across the street to the rear. And concerned that the signage is supposed to be there at this meeting and gives the chair of public opinion a question of, I don't know, pardon that lot. A lot does seem to be generally underutilized. There's seen more than about two vehicles parked in the lot, like my driver and I. And the underutilization of this lot is contributing to increased demand for parking and surrounding public parking lots. So, I wanted to do some research into kind of the history of a lot and see what the criteria were related to, how it got established, and determine whether in fact the sign or the way that the lot is or isn't being used is actually a violation of the code or an existing planning. So, there were a couple of CDPs approved, first in 1993, which was an orderly half of the lot for 10 parking spaces, but that time Larissa Plaza was under construction and not made permitted. And then, about nine years later, 2002, there was a subsequent CUP approval for additional 14 spaces in the satellite portion of the lot. That, in that CUP, it does talk specifically about the additional parking being intended as, quote, private off-street parking lot to be used by Larissa Plaza patrons and employees. So, again, looking through the city's files, there was some information back in 2013 where the previous city kind of just looked at whether the existing parking facilities for Larissa Plaza could be onsite and the offsite lot, or in conform with the code. And at that point in time, the offsite lot was structured 25 parking spaces. And the determination at that point in time was that, yes, the parking compliant code for the sufficient parking in the right locations to meet for the parking for Larissa Plaza. They've shared some information, the staff report this evening about that, interesting photographs that we found on Google Street View that show the parking lot in 2013, and you can see from that how different the lot configured 10 years ago than it is now. And also, interestingly, that the signage for the parking lot seemed to be an official city sign, and there was a couple of lots, there's even language on the sign saying that it's public parking courtesy of Larissa Plaza. That's not the way the lot is configured now. The sign has changed. So, most recently, the lot is now structured between nine parking spaces in a different layout, and it displays the sign that Counselor Rep was complaining about. I went out to go look at the parking lot a couple of weeks ago. The accessible parking spaces, there are two. Originally, they were closer to the street, down at the parking lot, like the rest of the parking. They've now been moved to the far back corners of the parking lot. They're both in pretty poor condition. They're both partially overgrown, vegetation. I don't want anybody hanging out, driver or anybody else, but I think it's a little part in their current condition. There is an adjacent residence, a town avenue, that appears to take access through the parking lot to get to the back of their property. And that seems to have been the case for many years, looking at the arrow photo. It seems to have been the case with the previous configuration of the lot. It didn't seem, it didn't seem to conflict there, but now the way that that adjacent property is fenced, where they take access, actually would seem to conflict with one or two of the parking spaces. So, someone was parking one of those spaces in the lot, it would block anybody coming in with an adjacent property. Instead, we don't have any rights set up, whether there's an easement there or if there's any kind of agreement. But clearly, that's the access that's being used for that adjacent property. And then also, just in moving through code requirements, the property is zone R4, and there's language in the parking standards that talks about parking lots in the R4 zone. Couple of things that that language specifically required. One is there's going to be a trash can or garbage receptacle for the use of people who are using the parking lot, so we have seen on a regular basis. And the other thing is that the signage is supposed to include specific posting of the hours that parking is allowed. In addition to saying that no overtime parking is allowed, it's also supposed to say what day, what hours parking is allowed. And in other words, the current sign doesn't include that information. It doesn't care if the previous sign includes that information either. So, there were several issues that I looked at and kind of determining whether there seemed to be a violation here or not. I think staff supply agrees that the current language of the sign certainly gives the, gives the original person the impression saying that the parking is for condominiums only, but it's for tenants and customers of Larissa Plaza, when I'm not sure that a lot of people actually know the building as Larissa Plaza, and certainly people who are casual visitors would have no idea what Larissa Plaza is, because I'm not aware that there's any signage on the building that says that.
Just all black.
Yeah, so it's not clearly, so I think it certainly would give visitors, tourists, the impression that even if they have the right parking area, if they were, it's a sense that they weren't allowed to, that these were reserved spaces for some residential condominium. But, that being said, there's no code requirement. There's nothing in the, there's nothing in the code that talks about signage, requirements for parking lots. There seems to be conflicting information in the record with the two permissioned use permits that were approved for each half of the lot, as far as what the intent was of these parking spaces. So, I think it's difficult, it's perhaps misleading and confusing, but I don't think it's a violation of the code. Counselor Rep has suggested possibly amending the sign warnings to address this. I think it probably makes sense to put some language in the code. If we want to have some more standardized language for this type of signage for other circumstances, but I think it makes more sense to read the parking chapter than the sign. But I think that may be something that's more, what we need to do. So, I think that with respect to kind of the underlying or the initiated complaint in this case about the signage, I don't believe that there's a violation of the current code or a violation of the conditions of either of the CDPs. You know, it's unclear if the city, I don't think there's a violation here. I think there are some issues with the parking lot that don't need code. The handicap spaces are probably the most serious problem. There's some really confusing stuff.
But we don't have that parking unit.
No, we don't. But there's still a code requirement that says, the general code for parking standards, and it figures supposed to provide parking for handicapped accessible purposes that needs building code. And I don't think those spaces need building code.
So, is that something we could send a letter to do?
Yeah, so I just kind of, I want to kind of get in there. I think the, I think the issues that we perhaps have a leg to stand on in terms of sending a letter to the property owner is the parking, the handicap parking, and then the issues related to the parking lot in the R4 zone, which is, there's what, there's a trash can. It's fair for using the parking lot to dispose of your trash, that we, I think, use once a week. And they're also supposed to have the hours posted on the signage. So, the sign, the sign should include, you know, parking allowed, you know, 6:00 AM to whatever, or whatever the hours are. There's limitations in the code. It can't be past 10:00 PM. It can't be before 4:00 AM, but anywhere within that can go. It's possible as long as it's posted. So, I think we could send a letter that asks the property owner to correct those conditions. And you can also look at pursuing something with code amendments that addresses parking signage in general, but putting that in the parking chapter rather than the signage.
Also, the access to the adjacent property?
The access to the adjacent property, I think staff kind of sees that as a civil matter. I, right now, there, the determination, I believe it stands, is that the, is that 25 spaces is what were, were in, in 2013, and that was found to be adequate. They have 29. So, as long as they still, as long as they have at least 25 spaces, I think staff's position is that they need code, so if they were to, if they were to eliminate one or two of those spaces, that is, this now would reduce or eliminate conflict for that access point, because really, that's still a matter between those two property owners. Whatever agreement exists or doesn't exist, it's really between them. So, I think as long as it, as long as it doesn't reduce the number of available, potentially available spaces in the lot below the minimum necessary, I don't see the need for the city to get involved in that.
Mayor, do we have to take action on this?
I don't think we need a motion. We can just confer that we'll send a letter to them.
I'd like a letter, constantly.
Yeah, I think you did a great job of...
Yeah, the other thing, I was just a, at this point, was to send a letter about those issues and then just kind of...
Give us a...
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. And then the other issue was the tree. So, August 15th, which is a couple of weeks ago, got an email from Counselor Faber about a tree on a lot off of Eric Street, and it's overlooking the community boundaries that are being cut down. And Counselor Rec called from... And councillor recalled from a year and a half or so ago, the conversation that had been had with the property owners about their desire to remove that tree and cut it down. And I had looked into it and advised them that they could not remove the tree unless, until they had approval to develop the lot. Under the pre-development activity provisions of the code, section 152.076, I think it's cited. So I, there was no permit issued, they hadn't submitted an application to develop the lot or anything, the tree was being, had been, was being branched or being removed, the tree was being cut down. I found contact information in the email, contacted the property owners and mailed them, reminded them with the conversation of the email I sent them in May of 2022 about how the current book sheet removed the tree. So, and they were actually responding to me a few hours later, they were traveling, didn't get the message partway, but they did respond. Pretty confident to, to get an help request. So as I mentioned, the, you have a section, code section 152.076, which deals with brading and clearing and vegetation removal, these types of activity. Clearing, quote unquote, is defined as removal of vegetation from a site wherein the root system of the vegetation is disturbed. So cutting down trees, or foliage, without removing the root system is not clear.
It's not what?
It's not clearing, quote unquote, as that's defined in the code. And I expected the site about a week later, I put it on my home screen because I looked at it and saw left the stump. The stump is still buried there and hasn't been removed. So I think that, it said there's no violation. The, the code says that clearing is not allowed and without the removal of the stump, the, it's not clearing. Cutting down a tree is not a violation of, of any, any current necessary ordinance.
This is where the tree permit is designed.
Right, yeah, which may have come into feed into that, which I haven't seen yet, but.
Yeah, and that's what this, that's what this is designed for.
So, yeah, so I mean, basically, there's a bunch of information in, in, tonight's report, there's some emails and explanations and justification from the property owners about why and how and what they were told by the complaint. But ultimately, I believe, from the staff perspective, it's not clearing, it's not clearing, it's not a, it's not a violation. So that's what the staff's recommendation is. No progress. Then the property owners did ask me, my email there about they wanted somebody to approach them or they approached somebody and they wanted to carve what was left of the stump into a bench or something. And I said, well, don't do anything initially, until, until council.
They'll sell that one.
But, but I, I think that, you know, what I told them is, you know, don't remove the stump, definitely. And don't look into it until you've got planning, or will do some, I don't know what they're.
This is like the best loophole I've heard all night.
Yeah.
Clearing, yeah.
We're losing so, so many trees. I mean, I grew up here, Collins Street, Ainsley, it's just.
Mitchell.
Winchell, yeah.
No, but that's where the code here will be no request to act another way, is that, or is that just not a violation?
Yeah, I, I knew that, I was just trying.
Somebody to go out and.
Yeah.
Stop slaughter.
Okay, thank you, Kit, that was good for me, very helpful. Uh, project updates, the grant application, yeah? Yes, so I've wrote notes about it and I realize that, I apologize, I realized I promised you to come to you guys first. But what I was thinking when I put this talk to the major partners about this, this could be replacing the, um, signs on the harbor. They need to be replaced, and we could talk about it in a minute. So we would have the information about that. We thought about using a sign above the whale lost. So the idea is to put these, I think I attached the drawings, for informational signs. We don't have a container commerce office. So I thought as part of our responsibility to help it heads and beds as far as, for our dogs, that we need to bore heads and beds, is we need to help, what we should help with, given some kind of a place to put things. We can put city notices and stuff like that and put things we want. But then we can also put other flyers and events that the chamber post business flyers, let the horn, all of these places, trade winds, that they post flyers there as a good resource for the tourists that are simply walking around town looking for something to do. Because we really don't have, like, something hotel sites and things, but just having a place and then helps get the work out. One of the places we talked about, those are the two places. They put in for four, but we thought that we don't want to make anything troublesome, to ruin anybody's view, move on to look nice. These are ADA accessible, which is very important. So people who can, you know, maybe when we have, we can put things when we have accessible ADA, accessible parks, you know, let people know where they can go to enjoy the scene. We've been invited to move to step two, the night tour of this application. Says it's right within what the Oregon travel was to permit. And it kind of works in conjunction with the chamber, with their ADA stuff they're doing. But we don't have to, we have to submit it in full by the 15th. So the council would like to put the brakes on this, I can certainly do the drawdown. This I went ahead and asked for it, it was an easy one to do, but, you know, I thought we should have asked for it.
You were saying you've already filled this out?
We already submitted it and it's been moved on to the next step. It's not a large amount, I forget how much it is, but it's not a large amount. But it hasn't, the, the full application hasn't been lifted, just a partial application.
So explain to me what, is it kiosk? Does it have flyers in it?
No, it will be like, two of the smaller ones are like electronic, you know, you know, push, push button type things to scroll through stuff. Others are like, like a light bar behind wax.
Wax, okay.
Types of wax, so it would be.
Out in the weather?
Yeah, they would be protected from the weather. These are, you know, they'd say they would be out protected from the weather. They source ones that can handle the weather. So.
For, forgive me, did you give us a photograph of?
Yeah, I, I put that, did you put that in?
I was talking about it.
Did you put the packet in? Oh.
Yeah.
Can I show you real quick? I'm so sorry, I really thought I put it in the packet. I wonder, um.
So does it have direction, is it a directional thing, say, we'll watch that way or?
It can say whatever you want to say.
I did, I did sign each one of those for downtown Salem. And we have cool with the signs, I had directional stuff that.
It can actually say whatever you want to say, you'll see it when I bring it up.
Do you charge people to put information on it?
Uh, we certainly can.
My real estate.
But now we couldn't, we accept it very much.
There it is.
Okay.
They may not have that requirement.
I could ask.
Inspired by the Christmas.
Will there be lights shining off of it?
No.
I like that. It's like a Christmas time, man.
I love my hall, it's seen, apparently I didn't play very well.
Oh, that's over at the hotel.
Yeah, he does have the hotel.
Is that charger, charger?
No, it's the Trolle's.
The Trolle's.
Oh, the Trolle's.
He does, uh, he has the big beam, like, the door.
Huge lights.
I, I never did, it became a crazy lights. There it is.
Yeah, I think we have grid lights.
Yeah, like if you put some spotlight.
Yeah, I think it's a good, I've tried by the spotlight.
Yeah, yeah, looks a little near, that's it.
That'll make sure this one has it.
Five o'clock.
Here we go, I'm gonna share.
We need to answer the tourist question in time. How far do you act it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Where do the wheels go?
We are almost four hours in.
Oh, yeah.
It's a record for a long one today.
Okay, so here's one of them. This is like a tablet kiosk. We wouldn't want to do the chores, is that we could just put something, go put a whale on it or something under a tree. That means you don't have to have anything. But then it would have a touchscreen up there, so it would work just like a computer screen. Other than weather. No, this one would, this one would be more secure.
It'd break in the bathrooms, it'd break that thing.
Well, I had thought about that recently, since the whole thing, this is what we're thinking about, either down at the, the harbor or by the whale center. I mean, we can just go over, yes, okay.
I like that way better.
Yeah, we do, I do too.
I just think we're just a little bit.
Yeah, and then this is another option.
That's where you see a lot of.
See the bright one at the top, that's another option. And then you have this bigger one. We were kind of thinking of the three in a row down at the harbor because it would fill that spot that's already down there.
It's a lot of space and you wanted to look very professional, whatever it was, put up.
And that's how we were thinking about the three and went down there and then.
When you say down at the harbor, down.
Down the harbor, down by the boat launch. Almost like down that.
South side, okay.
Down, south side, sorry, is that what I should say?
Well, maybe down by the boat launch.
Okay, down by the boat launch, that's where I'm looking at it.
There's literally one there that's kind of beat up.
Right. Yes, so we were looking at replacing that sign anyway, because it does need to be replaced and updated. So we were thinking about, Carla and I were talking about this one. And then either the, that one, that top gray one, or this three panel, this bigger one at the whale.
Oh, I got three panels.
You know, we can even do the three panel down at the harbor, but the, it's a little wider, I think.
With the whale down.
That would be boat launch.
The only thing about down at the boat launch is not very many tourists, but down there, a lot of people.
Right, but we can use it, we could still, it's still allowed as a, or a travel because of the whole, um, we would put all of our boat information in there, all of our rules and regulations, you know, these things we want to make sure people know. You know, we would put those down there. So that's not as much design for park cha-, uh, chamber tourist stuff. That's more designed, we, we thought, well, we can, I mean, we have a lot of people that don't live here that use our harbor, so.
I like that idea, can you email us all this stuff?
I would be happy to email you. Uh, but I guess my question is, is that we have to apply by December 15th and our next meeting isn't till the 19th. So do you want to just keep going for it? What happens after this?
Mayor, I, I, I just have to weigh in on this. I, and I guess I'm going to be a lone voice against it, that's what it sounds like. But number one, I'm, I just want to voice this, I'm concerned that a grants are being made without approval from the council. I mean, that's what I heard here tonight, that this moves forward without the council approval. And, and we shouldn't be doing that. But two is that I also heard tonight that we have a real time problem here with, you know, just updating things and keeping our own website up and updated and getting our public records up where people can see them. I'm all for that, I'm all for information to the public. But this to me is just another expensive doodad that we have to take care of. It's going to break down after a while and doesn't get us to where we want to go in this town. So that's my theory on that.
So do we need a motion? The council's okay with me proceeding?
Yeah. Yes, and I promise next time, it just came faster than I, not the grand stuff, but just the idea, so.
Is there a cost to the city on this?
It's like touring, $500, but we would do it actually, so. And we have the money in TRT for events as well. And that's what this would best be coming out, that's what it's for.
Okay, let's go forward. Any closing public comments this evening? Yeah, there's, no, you don't talk much. Yeah, please.
Yeah, I think we're setting a dangerous precedent by allowing, um, groups like, two ways to have these events, uh, no charge to the city. I think she's gonna expect it every time. I think, um, the thing she says on social media about the city, about city councillors, about, it's very controversial, it's very like malicious style, I don't like it, so I don't think we should be, that's what I've been asked of.
I know, it's too social.
Yeah, I'm sure she'll be talking about me tonight on there, so. Anyway, that's what she says.
Now, good, okay. Well, I have, dot places.
Yes.
Tree permits. And a future work session that might include discussion about how they get tourist office.
Oh.
Oh, tourist office.
Be nice.
That's a three for.
Okay, that's a three for. Councillor BC?
Thank you, Mayor. I would really like to hear a report, maybe during the next financial report, on the status of our accounting system. You could kind of give us the lay of the land and what we're doing to bring in a new system, what kind of a timeline we have on that. And just, you know, really familiarize the council with what we're at. I would also like to have a discussion sometime about the establishing the position of municipal judge so that we can cite SCOTF laws into municipal court. We may not get all the money, there may be no shows, we may be unable, I don't know what we're able to do or not do in that case, but I think a lot of people giving a ticket is paid. And, and I, I think we just need to look at that. So I'd like to see that addressed in a future meeting. And that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
I can't believe we are adjourned.
Thank you.